The time is now one o'clock. Welcome to our commissioner meeting. We'll start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so first item on the agenda today is a fully recognition.
So this is something that we do that I think is really important, especially for some of the folks who have been around for a long time, like the gentleman we're going to introduce here, who's filled a variety of roles all the way through law enforcement in the county, culminating with his current role as our with the county sheriff. So we would like to recognize Jason Spencer for 25 years of valuable service to Wiltley County.
Well, that's good. You're a little embarrassed. That's the only one.
Oh, you're it.
You're the most important person today.
Congratulations, Jason.
So the next item, we're going to jump because our county attorney is just running a few minutes behind. So if we can, we'd like to jump to the Propel US 30 update. I know this is something I think everyone's looking forward to. Everybody has a lot of questions and concerns about the future of US 30 and questions about how they can participate. So we're glad that you're here to give us an update to hear where we are now.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
It's on. It's on.
So do a thank you for making the time for us to come give you an update on where we're at on US 30. My name is Rusty Holt. I work for WSP, study manager for Propel US 30 Study. So the last time we chatted, we were just after the Purpose and Need document was released. That was last summer. Now we're at the level two of three levels of alternatives analysis. So that was released in March. We had a public input through April, public comment period, and now we're transitioning out of that heading into level three, which will publish later this summer and then have public information meetings. As I mentioned in previous updates, due to the size and complexity of US 30, this study area, we're planning to have three levels of alternatives analysis. We're giving an update on level two, but at each level, we have fewer alternatives with more detail at each level. So at the first level, we had 55 different improvement alternatives. They came out of level one. Level two starts from there. And then when we went to level three, after level two is complete, a handful of things you'll see inside the level two document. First is access management. Just to define that, it's the way that we control access or how people interact with US 30. So whether you get on or off US 30 in a specific location, where driveways interact with US 30. So that's something that we'll look more at in level three because level two is focused on intersections. Level three is segments, managing access along a segment with the level three topic. Second is free flow facilities. This can be everything, anything that causes US 30 not to stop anymore. So there's lots of stoplights along US 30. So anywhere from just removing all the traffic signals to making it a full freeway. There's a lot of access management inside of that. So just generally, we're looking at free flow facilities at this level two. But again, more in detail in level three because it doesn't involve multiple intersection. Another one is intersection improvements. So that can be something as simple as just fixing an intersection that's out there all the way up to an alternative intersection type, like a complete intersection or T or a roundabout. So all those fall in the bucket of intersection improvements. And then the other things that we've already been talking about, whether it's just an overpass or an interchange, tends to make it look more like a freeway. As the level two screening picks up from level one, we had 17 primary and secondary improvements from level one. Those 17 we looked at inside of level two. I will start to apply and evaluate screenings at the primary intersections using those 17 alternatives. And then the results from those alternatives will move into level three when we start putting everything together. So level two will be building blocks. Level three will be piece and pieces together. We had a five step process for the level two screening. Just we applied the same five steps to every intersection. So we treat them all the same and we get the same results out of them. I'll briefly touch on the steps later. Just to highlight that we did have a step through the process. We have 31 primary intersections. Primary intersections are anything that have a traffic signal and anything with a major collector or an arterial. It's just the most important railways that interact with US 30. So we wanted to make sure we were studying those in more detail. We have 23 of our 31 intersections are signalized. It's a process to figure out what those should look like in the future. Quickly into five steps. Step one was taking those 17 and identifying which ones happen at an intersection instead of a segment. Because we're looking at segments in level three, we just push those alternatives to level three. Everything else we'll look at in level two. So there's 10. We look at in level two. Of those 10, we then divided them into things that affect traffic control and things that don't. Because we have so many traffic signals, we're going to pay particular attention to traffic control and how the roadway is used in the future in that way. Those alternatives are in one step and then everything else comes back together for another step later. The traffic control step is a series of yes or no questions, moving through a decision tree to decide which types of improvements would work as specific intersections based on traffic, based on safety, based on mobility, the things that we looked at in the purpose. Then step four, we expand on that. So if a signalized improvement was identified in step three, we then look at various signalized improvements in step four and which ones of those do and do not work. So it's trying to narrow down from a gigantic list to a handful of things that we can look at in more detail. Then step five, we take all of those solutions that we have coming out of step four and provide a high level footprint of what the improvements might look like at each intersection, primary intersection. That allows us to compare them side by side and see the impacts to the environment and built environments around it. We also included a table in every, at every intersect, primary intersection that shows each of the alternatives, how they rate low, medium, and high on purpose and need, on environmental impacts, roadway and construction costs. All those things are identified inside of level two reports. So you can see how they're graded. But that provides at least a baseline level to compare the alternatives against each other. We also have an online interactive map, WSP30.com. And that will shows every intersection, shows a high level summary of our output in level two and then that footprint map. We also, at the beginning of the reports, have a matrix that summarizes all the different alternatives that are still in play for every intersect, primary intersection. So it's just a dot for every time we're looking at specific improvements and every intersection we're looking at it at. There are 231 of those dots across our 31 locations. So I would be looking at five or six different options in level three. So briefly talking about level three, we're going to take things that are surviving at a level two at each intersection and then start to package them together into an improvement package in a planning segment. The planning segments will be three to five miles long so that we can see how the intersections work with each other. We'll also introduce the secondary intersections, so not the 31 primary, but also the other 50 intersections that we're looking at in our study area. So within that three to five miles, we'll look at all the intersections, how they work together and then package them together, whether it's a low cost, low impact type of solution or a high cost, high impact type of solution and then provide that in level three reports. So we, as I mentioned, we did publish the level two report. Public comment period has finished on that. So we're kind of wrapping up the responses to those comments. We're going to put together your response to the comments and put it into a final level two report. But we are taking all the information and moving into level three now so that we can hit that summer deadline for turning in the reports. With that, have any questions you might have?
If people would like to view the report, where can they access that?
Yeah, all of our documents are on our website, propelus30.com.
Okay.
It's broken into an east and west. So if you go on 30 east, you'll see all of our information, but also 30 west has their own.
So which counties are included in the 30 east?
30 east is mostly Galveston, Whitley, and Allen. We do have one intersection in Marshall County.
Any other questions?
Can you just give in a nutshell the purpose of the committee and then the importance of it to Whitley County?
The study itself?
Yes, and why we're involved with it.
Okay, so US 30 has a history of being studied over and over again. So NDOT would like to kind of take a fresh look at everything together, whether it's local plans, end up plans previously, and try to come up with what the future should look like, both in the near term and over the next 20 years or maybe beyond. Trying to get a roadmap of potential things that NDOT could do to improve it. Again, looking at those things that we identified in the purpose and need, the safety and mobility being high on the list. But trying to provide a vision for the future, working with the communities since the Propel study. It's a little different than the normal NDOT planning process where it's, here's a problem, here's a couple of solutions. We're trying to figure out what the problem is first with what help from the communities to see what the vision for the roadway is. And then come up with some potential solutions and then keep talking back and forth until we come down to a handful of the right choices.
Have you all worked closely with the US 30 coalition during this process or?
Yeah, so we've got a long, a large range of stakeholders that we're keeping in contact with. So anytime we come up with a new report, we share our information with the entire stakeholder group, including you all. But yeah, the US 30 coalition is one of those.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm backing up Leslie Glickley from the senior senator's chair for the key one voucher approval on the 2025 operating and capital acquisition.
Good afternoon. Okay, so we'll jump in with the quarter one voucher. It's the standard voucher that you're used to seeing from me every quarter. This is the first one for the year. So you'll see some state funds will pass down with this. And we'll sign everything in blue ink today. So you'll see that we have a current request of 80,219. That's toward federal operating. And then towards state operating, 75,220. That gives us just a local share of $5,000. That's a $5,000 in-kind contribution that we are able to claim each quarter. That essentially reduces need for local share. It's the contribution of our board treasurer, who's a retired but certified public accountant and offers his services free of charge to us. So we are able to bill his services at $20,000 a year in-kind match. So that, that helps to reduce the impact that we have to come up with locally. So that's why you'll see the difference in those amounts. But that's pretty standard. And you'll see the applied local match in my last column there of about $5,000. So I will happily answer any questions that you have about that.
Any questions for Leslie? Yeah, I entertain a motion then to accept key one voucher.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes again.
And then I have a packet of documents for the application. And this application is for funding the 5311 funding, which is operating funds, and the 5339, the application for capital funds. Operating is just our annual operating expenses that we submit throughout the year, every year. The 5339 is capital funds to purchase two vehicles for next year. In our fleet, we were overdue for two medium transit buses to be replaced next year. So that's, you'll see that in the documents that that's what we've applied for. So first document up is the authorizing resolution. And I'm not sure, Andy, do you want me to just do a brief explanation of each form before we?
I guess that's, I've looked at everything. I have just a couple of comments, but if you want to explain whether, yeah, if I do.
Yeah, I have just a little bit to kind of summarize each. This agreement, the authorizing resolution identifies Whitley County Council on Aging as the county's public transportation provider and authorizes us as an eligible recipient of the operating expense funds, the 5311 funds through the state, through, they come from federal and state. This actually needs to be signed by an authorized representative for the county. Last year, that was signed by Tiffany. So it's not actually for the commissioners to sign, but.
But I still think the county, the commissioners need to have passed the resolution.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Yes.
And in the signature page, somebody that written in county commissioner. So it looks like you're asking for a signature from the county commissioner.
Is that the authorized resolution? I'm sorry, is that the top page?
So the top page, the authorizing resolution says, are you right?
Yeah. I tried to make notes so that it was as clear as it can be. There's a lot of different documents today. So, yeah.
It's, it's calling for more than this.
Yeah, I leave it blank because I know you have to fill in. So that one's going to be 2024-08.
And I assume that we can waive a second reading.
It's not a movement. It's just a resolution.
So we just don't require the second reading.
Correct.
I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 08.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion in a second to approve 2024-08. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same. That passes. Let's sign that later.
You can sign them all later. It's fine. Yep, that's no problem. So the next document is the local financial assurances. And this is a document, as you're aware, we have to provide local match for operating expenses and for capital expenses at different rates. The 5311 operating expenses are, were required to provide a match of 50%. For capital expenses, the 5339, we're required to provide local match of 20% of the total project cost. So this is attachment A. We'll show you our best estimate breakdown of how we will cover those local match requirements. And it's probably on the backside of that page, but it breaks down, and I apologize, I don't have a copy of that in front of me, but it breaks down our anticipated funds coming in from passenger fares all the way through contributions from grants and other agreements that we have with organizations throughout, throughout Whitley County. So that's our estimate. This year, we will have some insurance proceeds that we will apply toward the purchase of the vehicles that we'll be receiving in 2024. We'll have some funds remaining. So we're estimating about what we expect that to be remaining based on what we know we'll spend this year. And so that gives you at least the breakdown.
I would entertain a motion to approve the local financial certification and assurances.
So moved.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. That's the same and that passes again.
The next document is the certification of use of project equipment and facilities. And this is a document that certifies that vehicles and facilities will be and are currently being used exclusively for the purpose of public transportation services. Essentially, it's just in certifying that we're using our resources appropriately.
I entertain a motion to approve the certification of use of project equipment and facilities.
Second.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes again.
The next document, it's a little bit longer, and I think I flagged everywhere that you need signatures on that one. The 5333B labor warranty. What this is saying is employees that are affected by assistance under most FTA or Federal Transportation Administration programs should be protected under arrangements deemed fair and equitable by the Secretary of Labor. The form asks us to identify if there's a union rep that's available for this area. We don't have one. We're not unionized and we don't have that available in this area. So that area is just left blank and we've indicated all of the information as needed.
Okay. Any questions about that? So this is the section 5311, 5339, pass through.
This is the later warranty.
Yep, that's the 5333B later warranty. It should be the next one. I'm sorry if they're on the wrong order.
Okay, special warranty. Go ahead.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve special. Yeah, motion in a second to approve. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same. And that passes. So it's calling for a signature by applicant. Are we considered the applicant?
Yes. And that's explained kind of in the next document, the pass through agreement. For all of our, our application purposes, we are considered the service provider because we're providing the transportation service. The actual applicant is the commissioner for the county.
Okay.
Yeah. So this pass through agreement basically identifies what we just discussed, that Whitley County is the pass through organization and with Whitley County Council on Aging as the nonprofit service provider and recipient of funds.
One thing in this I'd point out is commissioners are agreeing that you're going to monitor the activities of the sub-recipient to ensure that the sub-ordered use and authorized purposes and compliance of statutes. The one thing they talked about is maybe having quarterly meetings or reports or something that they can provide you to so you can fulfill that monitoring requirement.
And currently I do meet with Tiffany annually, but I'm happy to do that more often if that's what the commissioners look like. And whatever you'd like us to do, we're happy to do.
So something you can just add, correlate to the agenda? Is that going to be okay?
Yeah, of course. I'm here once a quarter anyway for our, yeah, for our application or our voucher. So I can easily present whatever report you'd like and Tiffany, we can work on what you'd like to see.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion to approve, pass through.
So moved.
Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, it's right here. That's the same and that passes.
And that one does require attorney's signature as well. Yeah. The next document is the categorical exclusion of capital projects. This form is about our effect of, the effect of our capital projects, how, what that would have on the environment. And since our projects are always replacing other vehicles in our fleet, it's essentially saying that we're exempted by that categorical exclusion because we're not having more of a significant impact on the environment.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the categorical exclusion. Motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes.
And the last document is the FDA certification and assurances. It just assures that we will meet all applicable federal statutes. And it's very good at giving us the guidance that we need to ensure that we're meeting all of those requirements. They're held to that standard by the FDA. In fact, the FDA came in and just did an extensive review of NDOT this, this year. And so we've been seeing a lot of documentation coming out of that review.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the category one, for instance.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes. Can I see if this also requires signature by?
Yes. That's it for me. Your patience. I know. It's always a lot. We just have to do it once a year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Brent, you're up next.
I have 35 documents I'll need to sign today.
Yeah, thanks.
I have three that we will be dealing with. I'm here representing the planning building department. And I have two flats that require signatures, both of which are two lot flats. Both have been approved through the commission and would require signatures. The first one is Grace and Acres. And I would ask if there's any details that you guys would like to hear about that one or if that has been reviewed or.
With all the chance of review. Second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand.
I also have one here for Tracy Acres, which is a secondary that was approved by the planning team as well. I've gone through and looked. Everything that was conditioned through the plan commission has been amended for the secondary.
So I've seen it, but I don't see it in our market.
So he can. Yeah, I can certainly go over it. So it was a two lot subdivision. The total acreage on it was about a nine acre. They were splitting five off with the existing home and splitting up in another 4.3 acres for a new building site. Everything had passed. They'd had soil tests done already, approval for the driveway. One of the required conditions was that it be put in the flat. That driveway would have to be 50 feet away from property line to be, be approved. And everything else was, what's going on. So just a normal two lot, two lot flat.
Okay.
Make a motion for Tracy Acres.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Tracy Acres. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes.
Do you guys want to sign these now or after?
I can sign after.
The last item that I have would be rezoning, which would be for Lucas Wright, was three properties over on 500 East that were zoned from AG to HEP. It was passed with a favorable, unanimous favorable recommendation from plan commission to approve. So I don't know. Have you guys seen the ordinance? Have you got copies?
With the 2024-07.
And without reading through the entire staff report, is there any questions or comments that you have on that rezoning request?
I'm going to approve 2024-07 ordinance number.
I have a motion in a second. I'll open up for discussion. Andy, this would be an ordinance. So are we representing now that these ordinance is a second reading as well?
Correct. We're waiting. We're waiting a second.
This would be one of those cases that's appropriate to waive the second.
Correct. There's only two, very limited scope. One of us, you set your budget for the year. So the other one's this year. I kind of remember off the top of my head, but it's not happening.
And would that need to be included in the motion?
Yes. I'll amend my motion to include the waiving of the second reading.
I'll amend my second.
Yeah, I have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2024-07 with the second reading, day and wait. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. That's the same and that passes again.
Go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Julie Johnson Kelly for corporate challenge. The next item on the agenda is Julie Johnson Kelly for corporate challenge.
I am here to ask if the commissioners would consider paying the five hundred dollar fee to the Y so that the county can again participate in the corporate challenge. I think there might be a copy of the invoice in your packet that I have wanted to give to Tiffany today.
I have a motion for my old great friend's case in the employees. I enjoyed it. So I would make a motion to approve the funds to recover the corporate challenge thirty-three point four.
Second.
I have a motion in second, I'll vote in favor of it. Home another award, bring us home an award.
Is there anything else?
What does y'all get this year award?
We often get this. Well, and I think last year we did have a commissioner on the team.
That's right.
Hey, I made it to one event, I think, and my wife did far better than me, so.
Trivia?
Yeah, we were like, she didn't even know it was coming. It was obscure questions, I needed to be like sports themed or something.
Well, I have a motion in a second to approve, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same and that passes again. I do not see the invoice. I got you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ryan Gatz, right-of-way permit and discussion about. Big packet and fuel tank.
Good afternoon. As we go in order, the right-of-way permit, that's one for Nipco, they are requesting a road cut on near six-six-nine-nine East Maguire Road, Churubusco, to install gas service. Everything looks fine, as far as the plan goes, we will keep an eye on it. We will do the backfill like usual to make sure it's done properly. For settling. And then, once the settling's done, we'll go over a patch.
A question. This was deferred to commissioners for approval, is this unusual, or is it always come to commissioners for approval?
Road cuts have to be approved by commissioners.
Yeah, we allow for permits to be approved by the highway department unless it's an open cut.
Got it. Okay. I just drew a spot here.
Yeah.
I'm going to approve this request as presented.
I have a motion in second to approve, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same and that passes.
Second item on the list, the community crossings bid packet for advertising needs your signature. We're just gonna go ahead and get those going. NDOT request, and get those in and go on as soon as possible after we're awarded. And I believe Mr. Banks, hopefully you received an email this week to, or last week.
I saw it this morning.
So. Fantastic. But this is, this will be, the bid packet will be advertised, so anyone that does paving will be able to bid. And then we will also send same information to, I think, four or five contractors that we would like to have participate. And then once we get those in, I think I put the, I don't have the document in front of me, but I believe the due date is either the last Friday in May or the first Friday in June. I guess a sample time to award the bids after we open them in public meeting and take care of that and be ready to go for late summer.
So this time, you need us to accept the bid packet.
Correct.
I'm going to accept the bid package as presented.
I have a motion in second, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same and that motion carries.
That one is not, that should be. There may be two places for commercial signatures in that document, I know there's at least one, obviously. And then lastly, the fuel tank cleaning. Our new supplier, A Plus, back in, I believe it was March, recommended that we have our fuel tanks inspected. And one of his contacts at Optum Patrol and Services was able to come out and do that free of charge. So we went ahead and they gave a estimate to clean both the gas and the diesel tank. A little history, the tanks were installed in nineteen ninety-nine. And no record anywhere in employees that have been there since those were installed, that those tanks have ever been cleaned. So they suggested the best would be a man entry. And we contacted three companies, two of which returned estimates or bids. And Optum is the only one that is able to, or wanted to do a man entry. The other advantage Optum has, they will bring us a four thousand gallon auxiliary tank, which they will clean and, you know, filter our fuel into this tank that will have a pump. So we'll be able to maintain using fuel, diesel when they're cleaning the diesel tank, gasoline when they clean the gasoline tanks. There won't be any interruption in service. Only challenge there will be metering, figuring out where that goes. Be able to handle that without issue. So I believe I've shared the amount with you, but I'll be happy to let you know. Optum for both cleaning, both tanks with the fuel, temporary tank. And one fifty-five gallon drum of waste included is thirteen thousand twenty-five dollars. They're giving us a discount for doing the second take in the same, basically timeframe. Any additional fifty-five gallon drums of waste will be at four dollars and fifty-five cents per fifty-five gallons, so per barrel. And we're not sure how much waste is going to come out, especially with the diesel tank. I know I brought that sample for you guys to see, it looks like a cup of coffee, basically. So I think for the, for the best for our fleets, you know, for highway department, the school system that uses our diesel, thirteen thousand does seem like an expensive fee. However, if we were to get, you know, a large amount of debris or anything into fuel system in any of those diesel vehicles, that thirteen thousand's gonna look very reasonable. Yeah. So I guess I'm asking for your approval to use Optum Patrol and Services to do two man entries, cleaning our tanks at that price, thirteen thousand twenty-five dollars. We have to pass this round if you guys would like to get, if you have any questions.
Just sort of curiosity, the other vendor, what's their date quote? I know it doesn't sound like it's a workout for us.
Their total was eight thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
They weren't willing to do it for a man entry.
No, they're just gonna be using our fuel, spraying the tank to, you know, get all the crud out. That just doesn't seem, you know, they're not gonna get in all the nooks and crannies. Our hope is, you know, those twenty-five year tanks are probably, they could be reaching their end of life, but we won't know until we're able to see the inside. And our hope is the least extended for, you know, five or ten years. Because we're looking at probably close to a hundred thousand dollars per tank if they had to be replaced.
They're not turned down. So they're above ground.
They're above ground, they are in a, it almost looks like a shipping container. And they, we did find out, when they came to inspect them, that there is sand had been poured around it, which isn't normal. In case there is an internal leak, the sand will help soak up any, any fuel. Plus, there are sensors on the outside of the inner tank that would indicate any type of leak. We've never had any leaks detected.
And this will be paid for from funds collected in appeals? I know that we have every second increase.
Yeah.
Per gallon.
That is part of that.
Cover the expense?
Part of it, it will. To approach our bigger users, like the school system, and try to get some help from them as well. Which probably would be a conversation for another day for us to have.
Look, who said Optum lives to do the work? Do we know where we're gonna pay for the work from without having those conversations in some years?
Come out of contract services.
Okay. Okay.
And which one?
Contract services.
Right, so which one, that's just.
I'd have to look, I have that information right in front of me.
Well, let's figure it out.
Even fair terms.
The motor vehicle highway looks like we had an original preparation of fifteen thousand in contracted services, and there's only six thousand left in there.
The fuel facility.
Local road streets doesn't have any contracted. It's got fuel station supplies, that's one that we don't ever incorporate any funds for. We use two hundred ninety-four thousand out of that. There's a cash balance today. Sixty thousand seven ninety-three ninety-eight.
Is that from user fees? That's all from the government.
And that is, it fluctuates pretty much week to week depending on what they've collected. It's always collecting behind and what they pay out, but. So I think it'd be really sticking out of that fund. And also since we're charging each of the other regal, and I think, I don't think there's maybe they ask for more funds from anyone who's already paying that each of the week. I know that it's very, very close to being, wouldn't say in the negative, but depleted, just so you're aware. Like I said, every month it kind of goes back and forth, we've been in contact about it a couple different times of, you know, once they pay for their diesel or something, it might be in the red until they get user fees in. So just so you're aware. We might need to revisit how much we're asking for the user fees, because that's what that user is for.
So we talked about this before, about like a contract fullover, right, that the end users, would perceive that anymore? It seems to me like if we did have a contract fullover, that stuff like this could be written in. Where, you know, because I would assume that there are some parties who are using it probably as much, if not more than us, especially during the school year, with all those school buses and whatnot. It seems that, but with them being able to use that would come, you know, some share expense for maintaining it. I don't know where we stand on that. And in the meantime, we do have something that we need to accomplish. I've seen the sample and having two or a facility that cleans tanks. And getting a better understanding of what is entailed. And having purchased bad gas before and learning that it was because the tank wasn't clean, didn't cause damage to my car. I think it's imperative that we do do this, I just think moving forward, we should have some sort of a written agreement that protects everyone really, because we would not want, we would feel horrible if our U or the school system or fire truck got bad gas from one of our tanks, we don't want that. So what we're doing here is preventing that.
With Tiffany's help, I believe you helped us find an old agreement that had expired.
No, as far as I know, we've never had an agreement, I know Denise.
It is Keny.
Department. The only thing we have is what they pay per gallon, they already know they're paying. Is that the only thing that we have?
Yeah, it's just been like verbal agreements. And like recently when we increased, I think it was just really conversations that you had with end users instead of having something that would protect all parties.
Moving up to ten cents? Does any, I feel like it was five when we went to ten cents.
For some. They're getting really gummy.
Oh, right, and here.
Okay.
Well, I know this needs done, so I think that we need to tackle what you're talking about, figuring out how to cover these expenses moving forward. But I know it definitely needs clean. So I would make a motion to allow our highway director to pursue Optum Patrol and Services to clean the fuel tanks. Now, and take it out of, what was that fund, I'm sorry? The one that.
Contract service.
Well, that's an account, so I just need to know which fund they have. Motor vehicle highway, they have local road streets, they have the fuel facility.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Open up for further discussion. Now I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same. And that carries the name mystery. And interim, we may, you know, we may have to go to council for an additional appropriation or an allocation if we're short then on purchasing fuel. We'll tackle that when it comes.
And I'll review the previous contract that Keny got to me and get something put together to get handy for his going over.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay, next up is probation discussion about a non-county owned therapy dog. Do you mind just, you or Ed coming out and just giving us a snapshot?
My pet dog that was just trained with like lines of therapy dogs, just the same program that Journey went through. He's actually my second dog I've trained through the lines of therapy dogs. I have my own insurance on him for when I would come to work, if I had him while working. And he's also covered by their insurance and by volunteering, so he's covered both ways. I would incur all costs to him, he has insurance for medical care as well. I sent over the MOU for that, so he would just be coming as requested as needed. I know the prosecutor's office has many times. I know the prosecutor's office has many times where kids come in, they need someone there when they're testifying or going through the things that they're going through. And then even sometimes in probation, we have kids or families coming in that it would just be helpful to have from there if Journey's not available. So it would just be as needed. He wouldn't be coming every day. And I would get approval from chief probation officer before he went. I'm just requesting that he be allowed to come with the MOU that we went over and signed. But yeah, that would be my request.
Yeah, and do we have a copy of that MOU? And you have a chance to review it. You're comfortable. We don't need any of this. Okay, yeah. And this is your marked.
This is the same one we addressed before, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be the one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm. So only the other pushers to.
I'll move to approve the MOU Jennifer Christie and the county government for this purpose.
I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those favorages right here. Jason Genow. He wants to talk about the dispatch center infrastructure. ERS.
Not everybody.
Brett.
How is this MOU? Sorry. You can have my copy. I just, if you wouldn't mind, just.
Basically, it's an overview of the antenna system that is compatible, especially to jail. I think they stick them out there for very handy a couple times. ERS, but that's what the antenna system is. That's gonna be, actually, I think you just approved the final draft.
Yeah.
Which has been sent back. So I think this is a signature. We'll figure out and go from there. That was my question. It's just the, it's part of space service contract and what's gonna be solved.
Yeah, we've known from very beginning that at the new facility, we would need an antenna. So has everyone had a chance to review the document from ERS? And we talked this morning about the most appropriate paid for this. Kami, help me out. What did we determine? Our, so we would just need to get a resolution, the pre-council, to allocate the funds, but the funds are there. So I would add a motion to accept the scope of work with ERS for the antenna.
So move.
Second, do we need a favorable pass to that or no?
We can. I mean.
Okay.
We're approving it and council just has to allocate this. I don't know that it necessarily needs a favorable pass.
You can just bring up the year report or whoever, and then I can prepare the resolution. Have you any review?
Yeah, that'd be great. So I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those favorages right hand. And if those are the same, then that passes. Thanks. I'll try to put you on the spot more often. Facilities requests update. Do you feel comfortable just talking about our conversation about the facilities requests form that we're currently using? And what?
Yeah.
You were able to add to it.
So we had the facilities request form that we're using. The only change that I made to the form was making anyone who makes that request be bound by our terms and conditions. So very short, simple terms and conditions indemnifying something happens when somebody's using the facility. They have to indemnify you and, and, you know, you're not responsible for injuries and stuff while somebody's using the facility. So that's really the bulk of what all that is.
Okay. And as commissioners, do we need to adopt this or?
Yeah, I would adopt that as your official policy for facility.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, I have a motion in a second to adopt this as our official policy. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. And if those are the same, then that passes. And I appreciate the work. Payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I went up earlier before a meeting to go over payable and claims. Everything was in order. I make a motion to.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve accounts payable. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. Those are the same, then that passes.
Yeah, I will also make a motion for group payroll.
I have a motion in a second for payroll. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. And if those are the same, then that passes. And the last item on our agenda today is already for 15th commissioner meeting minutes. And we also have our April 22nd special meeting for right of way permit.
I would stand for this.
I'll have your proof minutes for April 15th.
I have a motion. I'll second the motion, but remind you, Commissioner Raisner, you were present for that April 15th.
Right.
So I have a motion in a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. And if those are the same, then that passes. And then we have our April 22nd special meeting for the right of way.
I will move to approve the minutes from the April 22nd, 20 from special meeting.
Then I'll second, call for the vote. All those in favor raise your hand. Opposed the same. And just for transparency, that was a special meeting because the work done and have a contractor already scheduled. And so we were agreeable to have a special meeting to get that approved so they can continue with their work. At this time, I'll open up the meeting for public comment. Anyone has anything they'd like to add today? Here, you know, public comment. Andy, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, nothing.
Tiffany, anything you'd like to add? Teresa?
Tomorrow's election day, so I'd encourage everyone to go to your polling station.
And Rob?
I have nothing else.
And I have nothing to add. So thank you all for coming. And the meeting is over.